I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in our nation's regard, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We have a public hearing tonight on local law number three for the year 2003, the Planning Board. I open the meeting up to the public for any discussion on this local law.
You don't know what the local law is?
It's on forming a planning board for the Village of Rousas Point.
That is different from the zoning board?
Yes ma'am. And this has been published in the papers, it has now, you know. No one wishing to comment, I close to the public and anybody want to make a motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion that we adopt local law number three establishing the planning board in the Village of Rousas Point.
I'll second it.
Motion made by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Huckrow, roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign. After how many years, we have got it. Open the meeting for comments to the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board, make yourself at this time. If no one wishes to address the board at this time, I'll close it. You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, a regular meeting until July 7th. You all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
We accept the read.
Second.
Moved by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills.
Any additions or deletions?
Thank you, Jefferson. I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckrow to pay the bills. Any discussion?
Lot of bills, aren't there?
Lot of big bills.
There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have a letter dated July 14th from Wyatt Pharmaceuticals. It was addressed to Rousas Point Fire Department, Rousas Point, New York. Gentlemen, as managing director of Wyatt Rousas Point, I would like to extend our sincere appreciation for your assistance during the recent 10-inch water main break in the Village of Rousas Point. Because of the outstanding efforts of the local slash community fire departments, utilities within our facility, WFI, purified water, air conditioning, compressed air, et cetera, were not affected by the outage, and our infrastructure remained intact with relatively little or no downtime. Again, thank you for your continued support throughout the year, and we look forward to future endeavors within this community. Sincerely, Robert Vincent, Managing Director, Wyatt Pharmaceuticals.
Sounds very nice. Brian?
Next letter we have was received this morning. The next two pieces of correspondence were received today, so therefore they weren't on the regular agenda. They're on the supplemental agenda. This letter is from Montgomery Hosehook &amp; Ladder Company, number one. It was addressed to dear mayor and trustee, dated July 20th. We wish to inform you of two new members who have been approved to our company for probationary period of six months. Patrick Dubuque, 49 Champlain Street, Rousas Point, and Brian Klucke, 7 Pine Street, Rousas Point, New York. Please act on these members as soon as possible. Respectfully, yours, Dennis Roberts, Secretary.
I'll make a motion that we accept these two new members into the fire company.
I'll second that. A motion made by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the next letter we have was received today, dated July 21st. It's, Dear Board of Trustees, having moved to Rousas Point in March of 2002, I have not contributed to the community to which I now call home, and am hoping that you consider me for work on various committees, or if the board seat becomes vacant. I have the following experience: Currently, I am the CEO of Gayor's New Place Federal Credit Union in the Wyatt Pharmaceutical Facility. She goes on to give her educational background. She has a bachelor's degree in business, and she lists her work experience. If you have any openings, you can reach me. You get their phone number and sign. Sincerely, Lorraine Bordeaux, 13 Priscilla Lane, Rousas Point, New York.
That's very nice.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Phil. Reports of board, mayor and board trustees. First thing on the agenda tonight for the meeting is the NEUAN annual meeting, and Alex Babe, from 9:09 to 9:12, authorized travel for the mayor and Brian Huckey.
I'll make a motion for the mayor and Brian Huckey to go to Thousand Islands.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckrow. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. I also have a resolution for the annual municipal electric conference, accredited delegate. Whereas the board of trustees of Rousas Point, a member of the Municipal Electric Association of State of New York, and whereas the annual conference of Municipal Electric Utilities Association of State of New York, been called for on September 9, 10, 11, and 12, 2003, at the river's edge resort outside of Bay, New York, and whereas according to the bylaws of the Municipal Electric Utilities Association of State of New York, each municipality member must cast one vote on each transaction properly brought before this meeting. Therefore, be resolved that George A. Rivers, he and his, to hereby designate a credit delegate for the Village of Rousas Point. Put this resolution to the floor. You second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Huckrow. Roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign. Another resolution. Whereas the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, has issued an order on June 10th, 2003, requiring New York State Electric and Gas Corporation to provide refunds, including interest calculated at FERC's mandated rates, back to November 18, 1999. And whereas a result, New York State Electric and Gas has issued a check to the Village of Rousas Point, the amount of $474,568.52, and the refund includes interest. And whereas the Village of Rousas Point wishes to utilize the refund in displacing at least partial new debt to the village, specifying the construction of a new, specifically the construction of a new electrical substation, and the displacements will result in reduced cost to the village ratepayers. Therefore, be resolved upon the approval of the Public Service Commission. And the Village of Rousas Point intends to use the transmission related refund received from the New York State Electric and Gas towards funding the infrastructure and capital improvement. This resolution should take effect immediately, and I put it to the floor.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Huckrow. Any discussion?
Think it's a good idea?
Yeah.
Roll the money back over, and we're going to spend it anyway, so.
We're spending about a million to it, leaving that, in that substation. And we've got about a million of it now, so no rate increase.
Yeah, good.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign. Did you all get copies of this email from Susan Shore?
Yes.
Okay. There's no way that we can attend, but it's very interesting. And Phil, do you have a copy of that?
I have.
And Susan Shore is a lobbyist for the Municipal Electric Association and the American Public Power Association in Washington. It's concerning the federal energy bill, and Senator Schumer is sort of being reluctant on it. And what has happened is that the power authority, it's on relicensing of the Niagara power project, and the power authority is at millions of dollars to relicense that. And this bill was supposed to relax all those regulations. They go through the same regulations as a nuclear plant does. But this is a hydro ban. What has happened is, as we all know, we've got an increase of hydropower rates because of this relicensing. And what they're trying to set up, a meeting with Schumer and the New York delegation to try to push this bill through, because it certainly affects all the municipal electorates. Anyway, maybe we should write a letter to Senator Schumer on behalf of the village, asking him to support the relicensing reduction, or whatever you want to call it. Because I think it's important to us.
Do we need a motion on that?
Do we need a motion to on that?
It would be nice.
Phil, second it. Motion made by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. I'm requesting an executive session to discuss contracts, and this is on municipal electric.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There's no discussion, roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign. The 48th Fall Training School for Cities and Village Officials, authorization, the school has been held in Lake Placid, 9:15 to 9:19, and authorization of travel for the village clerk and village trainer. I'll put that form in the motion.
Second.
Motion seconded by trustee Huckrow. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And I don't have anything on the supplemental.
Right.
That's nice. That's it for me?
You've got two tables.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to be doing trustee Bernard, can I be with us tonight because of illness and the family? And discussion on a paving of Maple Street. We have received many requests, and the factors got pretty thick here. I believe that everybody is on the same page here, I hope, in that basically we're going to keep Maple Street the way it is. Am I wrong in what I'm saying?
As it currently is.
As it currently is.
Not as it currently is.
Oh, John, you're, you're, no.
And it was.
You're as fun, aren't you? As it was.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There is some areas that weren't paved and will be paved, but basically they were dirt anyway, and that's.
Which areas are those?
That's a long trainhouse apartment, right there.
The old theater.
The old theater.
Right.
That area, down as far as the driveway, and that's all they're asking. The rest of it, stay the way it was with the trees and everything there.
I just question whether or not we should be in the business of creating a parking area for a landlord.
It's not parking, parking area, Kelly. That is village property right to the sidewalk.
So I'd say we should plant grass on it.
You're going to plant grass that wide?
Sure, why not?
I just don't see it.
I think, George, it will become a parking area if we pave it.
It is now.
But inasmuch as we have told other landlords in the village that they needed to have off-street parking for their residence, I just think we might be getting into some dangerous territory to be paving parking areas for landlords. That's all I'm saying.
Well, you may have a point there, but the point being that that particular area right there, and I'm not sticking up for anybody other than I know, they park there constantly. And if you put grass there, well, that's what you're going to have, it's a mess.
Well, perhaps if we plant grass there, they won't park there.
It was grass.
Well, it really hasn't.
Not really.
Even when Delagarde was there, you know, the area that you're talking about is not very wide, not very wide at all.
Well, if it's wide enough to park a car on, it should be wide enough to plant grass on it.
We have a request for them, and that's what they'd like to see there. They're not going to mow the grass, that's for sure.
Not as Maple Street is. I say, give them what they want. It's in dirt, not in Maple Street.
We're going to give them what they want, but we're not going to give other people what they've asked for? I mean, I think we're getting ourselves into a real problem.
I mean, everybody. Whatever they want, give it to them.
I don't agree with that.
I can't see that, because you're going to have a hopscotch area all over the place. You've got to have some company.
If you take a look at the requests, that's basically the only request that I see other than one other spot that's different than what the street is right now.
The one thing about that that concerns me is it is so close to a corner. If you have parking out there, I just want to.
Well, they're going to park there, John.
Well, I know.
They're not going to stop it.
I know they probably are.
They're going to park there. You know, they're parking there now. I just look at it as a maintenance issue.
Well, but the decision is really whether they, I mean, do we want them to park there?
Not, if they're skin out in my nose, whether they park there or not, Kelly. Jules has provided parking for everybody in his place.
Right.
Right behind the building.
Right.
It's not that he has to.
Right.
Or not Jules, but the boys.
Right, right. I just wonder what happens the next time we get a request from someone who's looking for a similar situation. I just think it's, you know, and granted, we're not, they're not saying they want this as a parking area, and I understand that, but in reality, I think that's what it's going to become.
Well, you go, and you come right down to it. There's no parking, overnight parking on the streets from, I believe, December 1st to April 1st. About that. Because for Snow Ringo, I mean, it's immaterial to me either way, but I just, I take a look at, like, in front of Wyatt. I think that that definitely should be paved, it was paved before. The other side wasn't, but it was.
Right.
People parked there all the time.
What concerns me is having it end up looking like the job that was done on Smith Street, and I have a lot of acquaintances on Smith Street, and they are not happy with the appearance of it. It looks like heck.
John, I have one thing to say. I was on the board when that was done.
I know.
And they, every single one of them sat right out here, every single one of them, and said they wanted that curb and sidewalk.
I agree with you, they did.
And it was put in.
But it looks awful.
They're not happy with it now.
No.
No, I understand. That's why, you know, we've got to be careful about what we do to.
Well, bottom line, board, this is what we got to decide tonight, because it's down to the wire. We have to go out to bid for that street, if we do. It's down to the wire. And I questioned Brian this week. He says he's got one more cut to make across Maple Street for the electric.
Right.
And there's no more, hopefully, no more tearing up of Maple Street. What do you mean like that, John? I said, hopefully. Sidewalk, they're down as far as Academy now with their secondaries, so that sidewalk could come in all the way, they could start putting sidewalk in right now, right down to, right down to Academy. And they're going to continue on that, so in the next couple of weeks, they should be pretty well done with the houses. So we probably should go out to bid and get that sidewalk in first, and then get the specifications written up and get this, this street out to bid as soon as possible. I think, I think we can do that now. We don't have to worry about any more cuts across that street.
And what's the plan, George, in terms of how far down Maple we're going to pave in front of Wyatt? Because it's only going to be the west side of the road, is my understanding. East side will still have the grass there.
Well, the east side, right in front of Wyatt, is paved right now.
That one little section is paved.
Right down.
But your entire house.
Almost as far.
Well, it's kind of gravelly pavement. Again, it's the same thing as.
No, it was all paved. It's been tore up.
Okay. So, but, so are we going to repave that as well?
How far do you want to go down?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Well, you really can't go down any further than Ruth Fisterell's south line.
On the east side.
On the east side.
The west side I'm talking about.
The west side. I thought we were going down as far as the driveway that goes into the.
Public station?
No, no, the warehouse over there.
I think if we're going to consider doing that for Wyatt, I think we should make it match. I mean, I think that.
Both sides?
I don't know. I'm just trying to picture how it's going to look, and I just, I just think it's such a, it's one of our oldest and longest streets in the village, and I think that we should try to maintain its character as much as we can.
If you were to go and stand on the corner of Chapman Street, on the Washington, Nando side, you will find that there is about, I would say, four feet difference of sidewalk. You go up to Chapman Street, the sidewalk's here.
Yeah.
Chapman Street up, sidewalk is over here, and you're talking not that much grass. Not that much, right there. From Chapman Street.
It was an accident, or underpass.
Oh, okay. My contention was pave right from Clunk Street right up on, on the west side. Because if you take a look, that's what you're going to have for grass, right there, that much.
Then what, then if we're paving that, I mean, the reason, I thought the reason we were paving in front of Wyatt was so that they could park cars there. If there's only that much.
Actually, visitors.
Right, well, but visitors' cars. Then there's got to be more than that much grass.
No, no, no. Take a look. Go up and look, Kelly.
Yes, but George, what I'm saying, if you're going to park a car in that lane.
No, they're not. They're not able to. They can't park a car there. They have enough, they have enough space between that sidewalk there.
Where, okay, maybe.
I mean, from, 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 I would say, warehouse entrance.
North.
I'll bet you there's someplace between three and four feet.
I think you could put a next.
Maybe not that much, but I.
That'll take short.
Because that's one of the areas that we had first talked about, trying to get more grass planted in there.
Yes.
I just think it's a beautiful street, and Wyatt has done a very good job of maintaining the character of the street with their sign and their landscaping. It looks beautiful. I just think if we can keep as much of the character of the rest of the street there as we possibly can, I think it would be a really good thing for the village to do. You know, I think we've committed ourselves to the downtown and to the waterfront, into doing facades and trying to maintain the charm of Rousas Point, and I think as little black topping of the side of the road would really help to maintain that same character and that same charm on Maple Street. It's a well-traveled road. It has the school, the learning center, and Wyatt on it, and I think that people who come to visit those three buildings would see something really nice in terms of what Rousas Point is really all about.
I agree with you.
Board decision.
It's a board decision. I mean, my preference, even on the west side, is not to go all the way down to, let's say, the Burden property. It would be to, but I don't know where that comes.
Because in reality, how far down in front of that building are people going to be parking? Are they going to be parking as far down as Pearl Street?
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so either. So even if we went, you know, just a short, just a short spot, I mean.
But I can tell you from experience, gardens don't grow there, period. It will not grow there because of the trees that Eric's put there, and people do pull up on them.
But again, if there's grass there, I think they're less likely to pull up on grass, aren't they?
No. Well, once it's, once it's established, I think.
There was grass there, and I'm just telling you, it just disappeared over the years. And I used to mow it years ago.
No danger.
It's taken a lot of body. Can't even walk on these streets, because people are hounding me so much.
I think that the only way you could ask for being infringed upon would be to add the extra cost of curbing in the area if you want to try to do this.
I agree. That's just so much money.
That is a large added cost.
So your belief is also that once the grass is established there, that people will pull right up on the lawn to park?
Yes.
Really? Visitors to Wyatt will park on the lawn?
In that, in that strip there between the road and the sidewalk, because they'll pull up, there's no curb there to stop them, so they pull up on the shoulder, and then they just keep going, and they try to make sure they don't get in the sidewalk, but they'll go right up on the grass, and they do their business, come out and leave.
I guess it's just something I would never do. If I were visiting a place of business and someone had planted a lawn there, I wouldn't park on it. I would never pull up on a lawn.
Put a wall signage.
So.
No parking between signs.
Well, then stand there for years, John.
I know, but, you know.
Stand there for years.
Being there, being enforced. I know our guys are busy, but, you know, you don't have to enforce it too many times.
Does anybody want to know the actual, or estimated cost, and how much is going to be paved in the street?
I have no idea.
Any ideas at all?
No idea.
I worked up one, since we're making rounds out.
Harrison, it's supposed to be part of the bond act for that water line.
The whole thing?
As far as I know. The only thing, the only thing that you told me, John, is that we couldn't get sidewalks out on the east, on the west side out of that.
Basically, the policy is they will pay you to bring it back to the condition that it was.
Wait until I go there.
Well.
It was a bad condition.
To patch it and to repave it is obviously a different cost, but it's also more expensive to patch per square foot than it is to pave per square foot over the whole roadway, so there's a little economy there, to some extent.
So how much do they, how much do you cover?
Well, it depends on what actually built. I mean, you're talking about paving shoulders. There's a difference in cost between paving and planting grass, I guess.
So those areas wouldn't be covered by, we'd have to absorb, the village would have to absorb it ourselves. Sorry, John?
John, one of the things I asked Doug for was an estimate in the difference in cost. Do you happen to know the.
I don't have it offhand, Kelly. I can get it.
Okay. I mean, are we talking a substantial change, or?
Well, asphalt is expensive.
That's the issue.
And it's not going to get out in parts.
And I'll make a motion that we pave just the roadway on Maple, and we plant grass between the roadway and the sidewalk everywhere.
I don't think White's going to let that trouble their place.
Did they put in a request for visitor parking?
It was already paved. It's already been paved.
Well, standing by my motion. It's not paved anymore. It's been dug up.
Do you have a second to that?
Okay, so how do we compromise? What do we do?
I agree with most of what you're saying. I do think that in front of Wyatt and in front of the learning center, that is, they have a lot of families that use that area to pick up their little folks, and I think that we've got to do something in that area. I am a little concerned about traffic coming on Liberty Street and parking there.
That's a good, I don't think they should be allowed to park there. That's an intersection.
Well, maybe they shouldn't. Maybe they shouldn't.
That's an intersection.
Actually, they do have, they could create more parking under Barbara, but that is, it is an intersection. That would be a bad place, really.
And for people turning off on Clinton also, it'd be tough.
I think it's weird if you ask people for their opinion, and they give a request, and then we don't honor the request. I have a hard time with that.
But if you remember, Brian, at that meeting, we did say we were going to try to step back and look at the street as a whole, and see what, you know, how it fit into the character of the street. And as John was saying before, we do everything piecemeal. I think it's going to look very bad.
Not only is it going to look bad, if you see these wide avenues, you know.
Yeah, and this isn't suburbia.
Hit the gasped, see if that can get together in.
It's a quaint little street, and it, you know, again, I think that the property owners, and I happen to live on the street, and I, I mean, the property owners have done a really good job with their properties. It's got some nice trees. Wyatt has done a tremendous job, I think, in terms of beautification, and I just think we need to keep the character of the street. That's just my own.
Well, I agree that green is better than than paved, but when people ask for stuff, I mean, I think, I say, give them what they want.
The problem is, we've got people living right next door to each other. They want two different things. The problem is, we got people living right next door to each other that want two different things.
And why can't you do that?
So you know what we do?
Why can't you do that?
What we do is, I think what we already agreed, pretty much put it back to-
Put it back the way it was.
The way it was.
And leave it.
Which is, the grass, almost all of it, except-
Except in front of Wyatt.
In front of Wyatt on both sides.
That was paved sidewalk to sidewalk, there.
Yeah, it was.
From Academy, north to which point?
As far as Fitzgerald's, Mrs. Fitzgerald's.
Okay, and then even on the west side, grass from there down?
Yeah, we kinda have to go as far as with Fitzgerald's because the owner of, of the home on Academy has his garage entrance on Maples, we have to pay for that.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't Fitzgerald have, did they have grass in front of her house before? So that would remain the same, I would say so. Okay. I'm wondering if there's gonna be a confusion with that gentleman's garage, if we pave right up to where his entrance is. It's gonna look the same in terms of his driveway and the rest of the street up until the corner of, of Academy.
Guess we have to pave that all of it, don't we? I mean, you can't leave a little spot here, a little-
We're gonna end up with a spot that wide.
Yeah, really, we are.
We're not getting anywhere, we're-
Well, we have to get someplace because-
I'll offer my motion again.
John needs some direction.
Yes. Must be a good one, or must be a bad one, we're still going out. Well, make a motion, do something.
Well, George, why don't we draw what was there? I think we have a map from a couple of years ago. We can color it up, sit down with two members of the committee, Brian Pelkey, get Brian involved so that the maintenance issue can be addressed.
Here's the law, John. It is now the end of July. We have no specifications. It will be the end of August before we put specifications up. These people want that street paved.
Yep, they do.
And we should be moving on it. Is there any problem with the sidewalk, getting the specification, getting that sidewalk out?
I believe Brian's recommendation to me is gonna be to hold off on concreting the sidewalk on the east side of the street until next year, just to allow some settlement and that kind of what. That's the last time I talked to him.
We can't do that, John. I'd rather that sidewalk goes from one end to the other and the other side does not have-
What's your recommendation? Agree with him, John?
Well, they, basically, I think they were, the electric department, I'm not fully involved here, Kelly, so-
No, I'm just asking as your, your opinion.
But I, I believe that they, their intent was to, the way they backfilled the telephone conduits was to allow some settlement to occur before the sidewalk was constructed. You know, it's awful hard to, basically, the option boils down to backfilling the conduit with flowable fill versus the sand that, that they used. If you use the flowable fill, you don't have to wait for the settlement. To try to get the sand down in between all the conduits is virtually impossible from during the construction. I mean, you could do it, but it'd take you ten times as long. So I think that the last time I talked to Brian, that's what his, his kind of game plan on the thing was.
I don't like the idea of having no sidewalk there all the time.
What Brian's concerned with, John, is he's worried that it's gonna settle and we're gonna have all this line going all the way down the street.
And I agree with him, but that's, boy, I don't like the idea of-
I mean, look at the sidewalk on the west side. They poured all the sidewalk, they never roped it off, and they ruined it by riding bikes through it. There's twenty different pieces of, of the sidewalk, I mean, it's, that, that's really a gross waste of money. That should be fixed this, this year, and we don't have money in the budget to do that. I mean, why do it if you're gonna do it half-assed? And that's what they did, they didn't stake it off and put, put stuff off.
Well, as far as those bicycle tracks, Brian, those are, that work was done by Luck Brothers under their contract, and that will be replaced with those, especially. There's half a dozen flags I know of that we have on a list for them to replace, so. I mean, they should be barricading it off, a kid wants to ride his bicycle, well, we're all kids ones, right? Well, no, there's ways around it, John. I mean, they, they basically fly with the thing over, and that wasn't done, so.
Yeah, you're, you're right. There were some that were protected and there's some wasn't, and I documented what wasn't, what wasn't, and that's been put on a punch list and they've been told they're gonna have to be replaced. And what they've been looking at is when they got done with the transmission main coming up through, because they're gonna have sidewalk with that also, is try to get them all and, you know, going through and when they're doing the work that they need to do on Clinton and Liberty Street, that they would go back and get those ones that we identified, that they didn't protect adequately on Maple Street.
Can't believe the contractor would do that. I mean, you know, and he just, just finished the job and he didn't finish it. Really, it kinda bothers me, you know?
Or pouring in the morning.
I didn't hear the pouring, you think?
Okay, let's get back to the issue.
I think we're back to from zero. We have not moved anywhere.
Well, I think we have. Haven't we narrowed it down to we can only get consensus if we pave near Wyatt, basically? Is that correct?
I can live with that.
Well, if that's what you wanna do, I need a motion. Give direction to Mr. Carr and get specifications.
I'll amend my motion to include just the roadbed and paving on the side of the road, only in front of Wyatt, both sides of the street, only as far down as the driveway to the Bouchard property garage. I don't know about the address, sixty-five or something like that.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. So now you know what you gotta do, John. So I expect next meeting we can launch the bid?
Hopefully.
Thank you.
There's one thing on the south end, there, there's about, guessing here, 'cause I don't know, it lands in front of me, maybe ninety-five feet that is included in the DOT contract. I would assume that the village would wanna spend a lot of money there, just a little, something to hold up for years or-
What I'd like to see is just a base coat put down this year, and I'll tell you why.
Yes.
Yeah, the whole make, base coat and, and not a top coat, because with the amount of digging we have done on that street, I think we're gonna get a little of this, and if we put just a base coat, we can fix that base coat very easy, and then when we put the top coat down, we're done.
Do I need to put that back in my motion? Are, are we okay?
No.
All right.
No, you're on with it. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on Mr. Menard's agenda. Authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to launch the bid for three fifteen KVA class two thousand amp continuous, forty K A interrupter capability vacuum circuit breakers, and two fifteen K V class twelve hundred amp continuous, forty K A interrupter capability vacuum circuit breakers. And I'll put that in front of a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by, to any discussion? This is substation upgrade. There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. And I believe that's it for trustee Menard. Trustee Hupfer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I've got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to appoint Tracy Heliker as a part-time police officer, effective of seven twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Anybody know Tracy? I know her very well.
Yeah, she's a nice girl.
Nice girl. She's worked for the sheriff's department for about fifteen years, and I know her. She worked on vault patrol.
She's a good officer.
Yeah, excellent officer.
So, we're a part-time officer for our department?
For the village, yeah.
So we would have two full and two part-time. Is that correct?
We have several part-time, we, but we use them only when we-
Oh, so she's in the long list. I was thinking she was included as one of our, our employees. Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Uh, that is now it. Trustee Hupfer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing, I would like to make a motion to contract with Lonzo Fireworks for the fireworks display for July fourth, two thousand and four. We do not have to put down an amount of money at this time. The amount of money is going to depend on the level of sponsorship we get. This year, if you recall, we got two thousand, uh, four thousand dollars from Wyatt, sponsored them with fireworks for forty-five hundred. Hopefully, we'll be at least at that level next year. So that's a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by trustee Hupfer, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Just informational, Art Gillette from Phil-
Gillette Entertainment.
Senior moment.
Castle Rock Edusman's called Phil and asked if his, his carnival could set up here during the dates of the sixth through the ninth of August, and we had some discussion about it, talked with Mike about it, and the, we'll have, we're gonna have fresh blacktop out on the parking lot by that time, and he's concerned about sinking and whatever, so he hasn't called back yet, has he?
No, he hasn't, I tried.
When, when, when Mr. Gillette calls back, we're gonna tell him that he could set up over on the grassy area between, between the parking lot and the picnic shelter if he wishes, but that we can't use this area this year, we're gonna do it until next year to settle. So we don't know what's gonna happen with that. Hoping he'll come here, but we don't wanna ruin the parking lot either. Uh, third item is I'd like to request authorization for Brian Zellner and Dave Supran to attend a training seminar in Lake George on the twelfth of August. They need us to get their contact hours towards licensing, recertification. That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by trustee Hupfer, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?
I just have one note, that the, the total on their expenditure column is not correct.
Let me look at it. Sure is, it should be ninety-four dollars.
Should be ninety-four dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
You didn't add that one, did you, Arson?
I just think so.
I just wanted to prove the correct amount, so.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, next item, Eric or John, do you have any information on water? Specifically, the water tank and the progress of the, the main.
Any other, Eric, remember that these marks are made day to day?
On the one point five million gallon water tank, the roof and the floor steel has been completely fitted and welded. They were offsite last week, Monday. They're scheduled to be in today for the painters to start their sandblasting on the interior and the roof and painting. I put a call into Landmark, asking them where they were, because they did not show up today. Once we have the painting done, then we'll start looking at doing the piping on the inside. With the old tank, we got World International Testing scheduled in next week. Their travel day is gonna be on the twenty-eighth, Monday, and then the twenty-ninth through the thirty-first, they'll be doing testing on the tank to determine the condition and where the, um, general condition of the tank. Tank will be empty on the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth or the thirty-first being a day to complete the exterior evaluation. Then with the transmission main, other than the obvious headache that we had two weeks ago, the sixteen inch transmission line, we have approximately twelve hundred linear feet installed. We're about six hundred feet up on Clinton Street, and we have six hundred feet of eight inch distribution main on Clinton Street installed, along with one hydrant, and we're continuing to move up along the street. We have located the water surfaces all the way up through there with the village forces. They assisted us in finding some that we could not find. When we went up there, we noticed, determined that the water line, rather than running straight down the middle of the street, up at Chapman moves over to the south side of the street, so, well, we'll be very careful when we get up there. Other than that, that's, project's moving ahead quite well. Any questions?
I've had a couple of people ask me, Eric, how, how deep in the ground are the water lines being buried?
The water line itself in the paved area is a minimum of six feet to top of pipe. In a non-paved or plowed area, I mean, a non-plowed area essentially in the grass, it would be five foot six to top of pipe.
Okay, but the plowed area is it six to the top of?
That is correct.
Good, okay, thank you.
Now, that doesn't mean that, like when we crossed, across Maple Street, there was a whole variety of existing things that we would have to go down about sixteen feet deep to get in under it.
Right.
At that point, we went over the top of things and we put four inches of Sarafum insulation over the top of it and two inches down on the sides to offer protection against freezing.
Right, right, okay.
Um, and then there's existing lines within the village, which surprised me quite a bit when we did the forest main down to your house, we're barely three feet deep in some places.
Amazing.
I'm not sure why there hasn't been difficulties.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Eric. Well, one more thing, I just hope we can turn back to the situation a couple of weeks ago, and I spent quite a bit of time up there, George lived up there, and, well, maybe there were some mistakes or some errors created. The cooperation of the village crew, of our engineers and of the contractors did a lot to solve the problem a lot more quickly than it would have been had they not worked together. I was, it was enjoyable to watch them work together if they did. Not that the situation was very enjoyable, but that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Eric, trustee Hupfer. Uh, John, I have a question on that water line, on that eight inch line.
Yeah.
Are we gonna continue that? Have you got prices to continue that?
As a matter of fact, you heard, it's about thirty-eight to forty thousand dollars to loop that back across the west side of, from the, you have a square in your head here, from the west end of Liberty back through to essentially the new water tank would be connected to the eight inch main.
Gotta be Clinton, huh?
Uh, Clinton, I'm sorry.
We go right straight through the middle of church there.
To loop that back, basically, is a result of the emergency caused by the main break. You, in, there's a ten inch main on Maple Street and a six or eight inch, depending on which piece of pipe you're on, on Lake Street, are the only things that connect the north end of the village to the south end. In discussing this after the main break, George had asked me to get ahold of Luck Brothers and work out some details and get some budget pricing on it, or firm pricing, the cost to loop that eight inch back through to the eight inch main that comes up Academy Street. That way you would have three pipes that would connect kind of the north and the south end. Unfortunately, with the layout of your system, that's kind of a weak point in the system, that particular east, north, east-west line. That's what it costs, thirty-eight, forty thousand.
Does the board understand what we're talking about?
No, I have no idea.
We're running, we're running a, an eight inch main up, up, sure, Clint Street. We're gonna be pressing that old four, which is, by the way- be replacing that old four, which is, by the way, off to the right, right?
Right now, it's running down the center of the street just to the north, but as you get up...
You can run a straight line, in other words.
As you get up to Delaware Street, it moves over completely to the south and runs along the south side.
We're replacing that 4-inch line up through there, and we're putting a new 8-inch line, which will go the whole way up to the end of Clinton Street.
That's correct.
When we get to the end of Clinton Street, it's dead, the dead end. So, while we're putting the 16-inch across Wyatt property, that's what we're talking about, running that 8-inch right along, along with the end, right back over and tying it back in to the 10-inch that's coming up. I believe the 10-inch...
The 8-inch that goes back to the Plastics Factory?
Yeah, to Champagne Plastics.
If you wanna go over to this...
8-inch line going in the...
You wanna go over to this map here, Phil, I can show you exactly what George is referring to.
Sure.
Presently, the transmission main and 8-inch are gonna be running all the way up Clinton Street to here. The 8-inch is gonna stop, will be a dead end.
But then it's gonna connect off of the other...
The transmission main will continue over to here to where the tank is. So, the proposal is to continue the 8-inch over to here, connect into a 8-inch line that right now comes over to Champagne Plastics.
So, now we have a complete loop.
So, rather than having a dead end here, which the health department doesn't like, and the water department has to come up and touch and whatnot, you have a loop over to here, and so you can be able to feed this part of the village from here, as well as from here and from here.
Keep the water circulating more, too.
Yes, it works.
Yeah, you don't have a dead end.
Yeah.
It made sense to me when I was suggesting, because I assumed we'd get some prices, but we have to make a decision whether we wanna do it, I would believe, tonight, right, John? Because by next meeting, they're going to be, oh my God, yes, they'll be, they'll be...
They'll be there.
They'll be there.
The purpose of the 8-inch line that's coming up Clinton Street is the distribution line?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it's replacing the existing 4-inch line, which is like 60-plus years old and corroded and just getting pretty old.
Okay.
Increases fire code, the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, in other words, it's $38,000 more than we had planned on.
Correct.
And the advantages are again?
Basically, from, you think of it as the north and the south. You go north of the water plant, you have two pipes which connect into the water system. You have the main, which is under Lake Street, which is depending on where you're at, a 6 or an 8-inch main. And you have the 10-inch main on Maple Street. This would reinforce that, so that if you had a problem at one of the intersections on Maple Street or any one of the other streets, the loop around there would basically reinforce the system. Give you one more pipe group to pass water through.
Does the board wanna do it or not do it?
Where are the financials, John? Did we come in under enough on any of the other...
Basically, the budget right now, depending on what you decide to do with the existing tank, is pretty tight. There's a few things that could be cut back a little bit. Been discussing them with the water plant personnel. We had a restroom up at the new water tank that they don't feel would be worth the money, and a few other things that could be cut back a little bit, but you're, you're very tight on your budget. In fact, I suspect you might be just a touch over if you, at all times, depends on what you do with the existing tank company.
Since this is the first, I've heard, Mr. Jeffery, issue we have, I'm not comfortable making a decision right at this minute, until we can take a look at the, you know, if we could talk, yeah, $38,000 here and $38,000 there, it's pretty sort of money.
I, I understand where you come from, Trustee Huckrow, because the issue didn't come up until we had the 10-inch water break.
Well, I, you know, and I understand that, but, you know, could you call a special meeting maybe later in the week?
Can.
Or something like that to, I know John wants to get going on it, because by two weeks, like you say, they're gonna be there.
We have a progress meeting scheduled for Thursday. Okay, else, let's get to what the particulars are and get it up for the board if that's helping.
I'm not gonna be here Thursday, Mr. Mayor. I'll be in townville at least Thursday night, probably Friday morning.
Well, we could probably schedule a meeting for next Monday.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and take care of it, but it's about Friday.
You know, I, I just thought it was an excellent idea when he was explaining to me, because first of all, the health department doesn't want any dead ends, and you're gonna have an 8-inch dead end up there.
I agree with you, no one dead end. Because then we're gonna send people up there to flush it, so you're gonna end up spending money anyway, so...
I think we gotta, I think we gotta...
Well, really, you've got to sit down and...
Can I just ask one more question, because I still have this straight in my head, just a quick question. So, this is a distribution line, right? Now, to me, am I wrong, that means that's what's serving the residents with their water?
Right, right.
Okay, so, water is coming out of the tank and down around, and then through this line, and then out to the homes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
But actually, there won't be any distribution between the head of Clinton Street and where it intersects with the Champagne Plastics line, will there?
Not currently, no. All I would do is offer another avenue to feed water into Clinton in the backstreet.
Sure.
It would increase their water pressure slightly. It would increase the flow that could go there, the fire protection flow.
But the water would be flowing in a different direction, am I...
Depends on the usage.
Okay, okay.
Depending on how the village uses it, it could flow, it would probably be flowing north from there, but it would depend on the usage.
I'd like to have a few days and maybe... Friday?
I don't have very high probability of that, but...
Maybe Friday afternoon. I shouldn't be back by Friday afternoon.
Uh, maybe next Monday.
The next Monday?
We can make a decision. But they won't be going down through the, Wyatt by then.
We're probably, yeah, yeah.
You okay with that?
We're gonna be there by Monday. Unless, unless...
A week from today, you should be up to the end of Clinton Street.
I, I really won't be.
I would figure by the end of this week, we're gonna be up to Clinton Street.
That's what I'm saying, Monday.
We have a meeting Friday.
Friday would be better.
Well, whatever.
Pick a time.
Friday, noon, 1:00?
I'll do my best to get you a mail tomorrow afternoon sometime.
What's good for the board?
Anytime.
Yeah, I'll just take Angel, please. Just tell me what... Are you working, Friday?
Working, Dave.
Oh, no, vacation.
Unless I get overtime, yeah.
This is a plots meeting, if you're vacation day, I don't care.
1:00?
Fine.
1:00, Phil, Friday. Can you advertise that, Phil?
Where are we gonna have it?
Tell me off.
Dr. Phil's office?
Yeah.
I'm off Friday, so Carol...
1:00.
Okay.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
I only have a couple of things on the agenda this evening. I attended a meeting of the Champlain Fire District last Tuesday to get some clarification as to Dr. Southwood's letter on the new fire contract. They did clarify that they are looking for some changes this year. Obviously, with their new EMS district, things will change in terms of the ambulance service. They're currently looking at some figures, as are we, and in the next couple of weeks, we'll be hopefully firming up what we can offer them for next year for fire protection. And hopefully, we'll have something for this board to, to look at at the next meeting. So, that's something that's sort of ongoing, and if you have any ideas in that area, just let me know. The second update that I had this evening regards local law number four, which will be the zoning board changes that we put on the shelf for a couple of weeks. I attended the zoning board meeting last week as well, and they, they have agreed to take another look at anything else that needs to be written into that local law, and I'll be working with Mr. Pedro so that we can make the changes that we need to make. And we're also going to be meeting with Mr. Renee regarding the subdivision part of the planning board local law that he'll be working on for us as well. So, those will be some things that will be upcoming. I don't imagine we'll have an update from our meeting with Mr. Renee until probably the second meeting in August, but we'll be attending the zoning board meeting again in, in August as well. And that is it. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
Eric, do you have anything? I know Doug's on vacation on the sewer project. Anything to report?
I don't, I'm pretty sure John does. He's involved in my cart line, Alan, and Ray, and basically, we're still awaiting something from DEC on that sewer outfall route. I counted the people in Albany about it. George has sent a couple of letters to the local representatives, the state senator, and assemblyman. Hopefully, something will break loose here. Kind of hamstrung, right?
You're cautiously optimistic.
Yes, I guess you could put a bright note on the end of the day by saying that. I think it's just a matter of time. It's not a matter of yes or no. It's just a matter of patience, which some of us don't have a lot of right now, myself, I'm speaking.
How's that very good?
Well, it's kind of a frustrating issue, Brian, from our end.
Is that it, John? Is that you?
Can I just ask, I don't know whether it is to be a question for you, but, how are we doing on our funding for that, John?
Well, basically...
Are we still, we have to wait on that?
Yeah, I mean, the permission that we've asked for really defines a lot of the financial and technical issues, so...
So, once that comes through, everything else should follow?
Yes, in a reasonable way.
Once we get the bid for the, we know what the, what the cost is going to be, then we can pump the fingers in and get that moving, but we can't do that. It's like you're sitting here with a pair of handcuffs on, and you can't go anywhere. The famous DEC.
I just have a couple other things. Boy, my phone's been ringing off the hook lately on the pool fencing. I think, right, you're gonna get into that. And I wanna explain to people about the electrical outlets, 'cause I wasn't familiar with this, because people have put in pools, and they put electrical outlets in, and it has to be inspected by, there's only one or two people in the county that do it. There's nobody in town that does it, so that people know that, you know, I mean, it's like people are saying, there's 25 here, 50 here, and so, I mean, just to let everybody know, it's for their own safety, and we're gonna talk about the fences. And what I told basically people, if you have a pool and somebody falls in that pool and drowns, you're gonna be responsible for it. So, and if you're not sure on that, check with your homeowner, but, you know, the liability is. Somebody said to me one time, he was at my pool swimming, and I said, what happens if you get hurt, hurt in my pool? I'm gonna sue ya. So, you gotta realize, if you have a pool and you don't have a fence and somebody drowns, you're gonna be legally responsible. So, just for safety's sake, you know, you should consider putting the fence up. And just the other thing I wanna talk about tonight, it just seems like we have been spending a lot of money in the village. A lot of people have come to me and said, boy, we're spending a lot of money. You know, we're trying to make the right decisions here in the village. I know budgets are tight, and I hope that the economy and the way things are going here, that with Aris and everything, that things turn out to be better than they look. But they're, things don't look too good right now as far as people getting laid off and stuff like that. So, again, unlike Alan Greenspan, I'm cautiously optimistic that the economy will turn around, but the way the state budget is and the federal budget is, it kinda bothers me, because money's a little tight right now. So, I think we should tighten our belt and make every dollar count, and hopefully, you know, everything will come out in the long run. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Phil?
I just have one item on the agenda. I don't know if anyone has made any, has given any more thoughts to the idea of pollution insurance. I just thought I'd bring it up again, and I'll bring it up until you give me a yay or a nay insert.
Did you get a quote yet, if you're gonna try to get some information?
The quote, the quote hasn't changed for the pollution. It's around $2,300 a year.
No, I mean for the, I'm sorry, I mean for the spill tanks.
I was told by the mayor to wait until next year.
Not on, not on the two tanks behind the table. On those two, that is going forward.
That's gotta be done. We gotta launch some ops as well.
Well, basically, they've gotten some prices.
Well, that's what I have.
Yeah. John got some prices. Those tanks are very expensive. I think we got just about enough money in the budget to buy the two tanks.
These are the new double wall roofs?
Yeah. For, for that. The, the tanks at the soar plant pumping station, the soar plant, and the north pumping station down here are buried tanks. And I said, we don't have anything in the budget this year to take care of them. Let's leave them, but those two tanks behind the village garage, it's a disaster waiting to happen. We spring a leak down there. It's gonna be in the lake, and we are going to be hit hard. So, I'm pushing to get those two tanks. And we were looking at a new system for accreditation from how that gases dispense gas and diesel fuel.
I, I agree with you.
We're not going to do that this year. We're gonna use the existing system and get the tanks moved.
I agree with you that we've gotta replace the ones at the village office. How much?
They said it's, we had, what, $7,500 in the budget?
I think it's $10,000.
I think it was $95,000.
$95,000. They're pretty close to that for the two tanks.
We've got it in the budget, that's fine.
It says in the budget, yeah. It's just to get, actually, I'd like to go out to bid for it. That kind of price, I think we should.
I think we should also. Can we use the existing, what do you call, crimps?
No.
Whatever?
We won't need those, the new tanks.
Can we use them if, at that location anyway, even with a double wall tank, or not?
I don't know if the tanks would be compatible or not.
I don't know either.
We won't need the crimps down with the new tanks. They're fake boxes.
I understand that. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, that is, like you just said, that is the lake.
Yeah.
And I would like to take every possible precaution, make sure that we never...
Well, those tanks are gonna hold up here.
Pardon?
Those two tanks are moving up there.
I know we are.
And I asked John the other day, and he had gotten some prices from one firm, and they were outrageous. So, I asked him to contact Smith, and then I said, well, they had it. Let's get some specifications, go out and bid for them.
I think that's the best thing to do.
And you're talking about doing this when, George?
As soon as possible.
Okay.
As soon as possible. Get them two tanks out of the back there. The underground tanks, they spring a leak, they spring a leak, right? And we can, we can deal with that situation, 'cause it's not gonna go in the lake immediately. And we'll know, you know, I think there's a $1,000 tank up at the soar plant and two 500s, one 500 at Maple Street and one 500 down below. And we'll budget that next year to replace it.
We don't need to replace them with a $1,000 and two 500s, correct? We can replace them with two 250s and...
Whatever, yeah. It's all they're doing, bringing a diesel generator.
Exactly.
We don't need them big tanks.
They have huge tanks.
Yeah.
And they will be above ground, correct?
Yep, above-ground tanks. Double-line tanks, whatever, to meet all the specifications.
Are you in a position where you wanna publish and go out to bid for those tonight, or you don't wait?
Well, we don't have specifications. We can, we can authorize it. We go out to bid.
I was just wondering what your, what your...
Authorize it.
We should get it done.
Get it done with, yes. And we'll get the specifications together in the next couple of weeks and get it out.
Somebody get a motion, please.
Got it.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual sign of aye. Then we'll go out and bid for cats tanks.
So, back to the pollution coverage.
Once we do that, will we need it?
The, the idea of the pollution coverage, and I'm not trying to sell it in one way or the other, it's just if there is a leak of any of the above-ground tanks, it's a million-dollar limit, a $5,000 deductible, which will give you some indication of what the cost can run if you're gonna run that high of a deductible. I'm just offering, if you guys want it, it's fine. If you don't, that's fine, but I just wanna be on record knowing which way you guys wanna go with it.
The premium, that's probably...
Around $2,300 a year.
$2,300, what is this?
$14,000 is the public... The $12,000 is the public's issue.
That's the director's liability, John.
All right.
Arson, please.
Okay.
Are we okay with that, or no? Can we afford that?
Well, we'll budget it for it.
No, you haven't budgeted for it.
We'll off another year.
Well, we're gonna take care of the situation next year, so we won't have to worry about, right?
It's not the idea of taking care of the situation. If at any point you have a leak, whether the tanks are old or new, and you have a spill situation, this pollution liability after the first $5,000 deductible would cover the cleanup up to $1 million. And you may never have a leak. That is whatever you folks want.
That's exactly why I said I'd like to see, you know, these double wall tanks are guaranteed against everything except hurricanes. I'd like to see them cribbed.
And that might be a way, instead of pay the insurance, Brian, you put a crib in, and then you never have to worry about it. If you have a leak, it's right here.
You're talking about steel ones? You take a look at the two steel ones that are down there, they're just about rusted out.
They are, right.
So if you wanna put cribs, you put a concrete one up.
Exactly. Is that something we can do?
Yeah, but we can budget that next year.
But is that something we can do ourselves? We can't.
Well, I don't see why not.
But that's what I'd like to see done with all of them.
Then instead of spending $2,300 a year, we spend whatever, four, $5,000 for the crib once, and then we're done.
But should we consider taking it until such time as we have those cribs built?
It's like going to Las Vegas, isn't it?
Yeah.
We haven't had it yet.
I mean, the way things have been going in this village...
How long's the, how long's the underground tank down at the sewer plant? About twenty years?
Eighty-six, I think. Is that that, John? Eighty-six.
Thirteen, twenty.
All, all three tanks are about the same.
Probably excellent, same to the Yanks.
We've got it. We're going to next year. Replace those three tanks with a above-ground tanks, double line.
I believe you can just use a regular 275-gallon tank inside the building to twenty feet.
But they don't have to room inside the building.
Certainly, you at the sewer plant, and I would think at the pump stations, you could find perhaps some room. I mean, there's a major difference in cost. There's also, there's also, you know, an inherent protection being inside the building as opposed to outside.
They put that thousand-gallon tank down there, not only for the generator, but they were using it for the machinery. Well, they can come down below and get their, get, get their fuel down below.
Yeah, with the sewer plant, they were using it to fuel the equipment now at the D P W office there, and maybe...
They're not that far away to get them. So it means a small tank just to run their generator.
Yeah.
And you can put it inside, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I really kind of think that, I mean, I haven't addressed this through the code office, but I really think that might be the best solution that you could pump stations do.
I'm not sure if you got room inside those pump stations. They're pretty tight.
Yeah, I know on the south end you'd have the room, but I don't know.
South end, south end one, I don't think has fuel tank. Think that's gas, natural gas, runs the propane. And I know there's no fuel tank down there, south end.
North end in Maple Street.
North end in Maple.
Well, if we love that one, we can do it.
No. Anyway. So we're back to you, George, that the board, about the insurance or not? As far as I'm concerned, I would say no, but at this point...
Let's wait another year.
Let's just wait and see.
I think we should have it until such time as we shore up those tanks.
You're gonna pay $2,500, and we're gonna do two of them right away.
Possibly the third.
Yeah. Could possibly do the third.
No, the sewer plant.
Chickens today, tomorrow.
Phil, would this cover anything when we're moving or replacing those tanks? Does it cover anything like that?
I couldn't tell you that, yes. Normally, when you move anything, of course, you drain it first, and you might have a...
Those tanks down there will be drained and scrapped.
And you have to have D E C here when you're doing it?
Just we need another D E C. Okay, anything else, Phil?
Nope, that'll do it.
Arson?
I don't have anything.
Leonard?
Just wanted to touch bases on, with the interns. Church Street, Mr. Nutt's residence, his sewer issue that he's had up there, they've spent some time reviewing all the existing sewer manholes. We went through some of the records at the sewer plant. We were able to locate two manholes that the D P W thought were gone, so we located them, uncovered them. Brian said he's gonna bring them back up to grade. We've checked all the levels of the different pipes down there, and we've presented a sketch to Phil, which I believe he's passed on to Brian at the D P W for proposed solution to their backup up there. That seems like every six months that the village has to go up there and flush out those manholes to keep their sewers running properly. And with the infrastructure mapping, we're making great strides. One of the biggest strides I'm seeing is that a lot of the existing documentation is incorrect. We're going out and we're trying to find things by the old measurements and whatnot, and they're not there, you know? So we're spending a lot of time hunting and finding things and documenting it accurately, and as Doug reviewed, trying to get it down into one comprehensive base map. With that, you're gonna see in the next, hopefully this week, my interns zipping around in a little golf cart with slow-moving signs and whatnot to make them more productive in collecting this information, so please don't run them over. That's all I have.
I just have one question, Eric. When you say that we've been up on Church Street every six months, are you using the data from where?
I'm just word of mouth. And in the last little bit that I've been hearing about this Nutt issue, I know it's been about six months ago that they were up there flushing out the manholes, and prior to that, it was about nine months. I don't have any data to say that it happened here. There's a work order, there's a work order, there's a work order. It's just a reoccurring of Mr. Nutt getting Doug's ear for the last two years, and then Doug kind of looking at the situation and talking to people, and, yeah, about every six months to nine months that they go up there. What you have is from three or four houses in Mr. Nutt's area.
Guys, I read it, I read it. So I understand the problem. So, so have you guys, is that, you've signed off on that, or not? Are we, are we done with the investigation of Church Street, or no?
Until I hear back from Brian or the D P W on any questions on our proposed solution, we're, we're done looking up there for right now.
Okay.
But we're still looking there for existing utilities, valve boxes, whatnot, as we go into the village.
Right. But you feel like you've solved the problem in terms of that memo that he...
We've identified what the problem is, yes.
Brian and I are gonna have a meeting, too. We talked about it the other day. The judge forgot over.
Okay.
Last but not least, the code before I go off, sir.
I'd like to comment on what Brian was talking about with the pools. I have sent some letters out to people in the village that have these portable pools. They're a new phenomenon here in the last few years, and they fall under the same rules as the, your original in-ground and on the, or above-ground pools. These are called on-the-ground pools. They have the same requirements as all other pools. They need a permit. Village of Rosas Point established that in 1992. I know that was one of the issues that was brought up. There is a permit fee for it, $25. You have to have an electrical inspection by a third-party inspector, which is not myself. It's either Rick Soul or Gary Legacy from Commonwealth Electrical or Middle Department Electrical. It's my understanding that that fee itself is about $50. So you're looking at $75 on top of what they pay for these pools. Now, if those pools aren't 48 inches, they have to have a fence around them. And then they have to have a self-closing gate or a portable fence or gate ladder that you can pull in and take out. They have to be childproofs. Nobody can come from across the lot and decide to take a jump in the pool. The reason I sent the letters out is because it's part of the building code, and if I don't send the letters out, something happens, and the lawyers get in line and start suing, I'm the man on the bottom. So it's my job to make the public aware of this. Some of them don't like it. I can't help that. Phil's lost some height over this. I've lost some height over it, so...
So why?
But it's New York State Building Code, right?
Yes, it's the New York State Building Code.
It's not something that...
The other part of the code is, is the New York State says that anything with 24 inches of water in it or more is classified as a swimming pool. Less than that is not, doesn't even come into the code. Some of these pools are 18 inches or less. The question came up as to these little flower ponds or fish ponds that people put in. Those aren't even classified in the building code. Now, whether or not they will be at some time, that I don't know. But right now, anything with 24 inches is the New York State Building Code. Plattsburgh, they've adopted a more stricter version of this. Theirs is 14 inches. That did away with the argument of the 18-inch pools. Malone, you probably read in the paper, it's 18 inches. Now, whether or not the village wants to go along with something like that, it's up to you people, but currently, it's 24 inches. I had one person call me up and tell me they had 22 and a half inches of water in their pool. Now, if it rains, it's gonna be 24 inches of water, so it, it's a very gray area. It's a very argumentative area at best.
Is it $25 fee, one-time fee, or $25 every...
No, it's a one-time fee. It's established so that you know that there was a permit in place, it was set up right, it was inspected, and it met all the criteria that's supposed to meet.
Somebody asked me how we're gonna do it in the enforcement. Are we gonna be a grace period, or are we gonna be your violation?
Well, when you get a letter saying that you have a pool and that you need a permit for it, how much grace period do you need? You know, I'm willing to wait a week, but after you go two, three weeks, and then you get a permit, and then they set them up, and then it's another two months before they get an electrical inspection, those things are taken down, put away for the winter. Then you start all over again next summer.
Good.
Yes, sir?
You mean they have to apply for another permit next summer?
No. No, but what I'm saying is, once they apply for the initial permit, the village or myself will issue the permit, but then they have so much, I mean, they have to meet the requirements. They gotta install the fence, they have to get an electrical inspection. The electrical inspection's the big. Nobody wants to pay the $50, so they always wait and wait and wait. And, I mean, we only have two months of summer here.
So in reality, they're setting up their pools without...
Basically.
And we provide them a permit so they can set up the pool, which they have to do before they can have the electrical inspection.
That's correct. The inspector won't inspect it unless it's completely set up prior.
Right.
And the code has changed, so it's gotta have a different box now?
Yes, it's my understanding they have to have a dome-type box. The regular outdoor G F I cover is not allowable on these things, so, oh, it's the code, I mean.
Mike, is this, is this new this year? I guess the reason I'm asking this is people are saying, well, why weren't we told before now? And I just wasn't sure if this is...
Well, like I say, the pool permit is, was there in 1992, and the village adopted it. At that time, they were supposed to get a, a permit, and they should have gotten an electrical inspection back then, too, as far as what I know. I mean, I can't answer what, what happened in the past, but what I'm being, and I've checked around other towns, and they've told me that it's been the losses day one, so, you know, I'm going by.
But you're just starting, I guess the word is that people ask me, why are we starting to enforce it now? I guess it's, I, the biggest question I've had, why we've had it for two, three years? Why this year are we doing it now?
The, the reason I'm doing it now is, like I explained, I'm the, the code officer. It's my job to make the public aware, if there's a, a violation or whatever, to protect them and also to protect the village, to protect myself. If I don't do anything, if I don't send any letters out and something happens, I'm the man sitting at the bottom.
You got like going to church?
No. I hope the village has a lot.
What I can understand is that some of these people have called me and said that they've had the pool seven years.
If they never got a permit for it, then they're still responsible to get a permit for it.
Well, I'm saying, they said they had the pool for seven years, and all of a sudden I gotta put a fence up, I gotta be pissed. Well, I always knew that any in-ground pool had to have a fence. Knew that.
Yeah.
You haven't found all the pools either.
Well, this is just it. The, the pool contractors, I, I mean, they, they come around, or they're in town, or wherever, and people buy a pool from them. They never get a permit unless you know who has a, a pool from the past. I, I mean, I'm just throwing darts here, trying to figure out who had pools and who doesn't. If I see one going up, or somebody tells me about it, then I, I look into it. But I'm sure there are some out there that I don't know, and this is the argument I get, well, Joe so-and-so didn't get one. Well, how do I know this? You know? So...
Right, because you, you mean, you can put one up without informing anyone.
I mean, some backyard, you can't see in the backyard, and I'm certainly not gonna go sneak around the corners looking for pools.
Yeah, and if somebody had a high fence, you know, you gotta do it.
Anyone have any other questions?
So the most important thing that you want people to take away from this is that you are notifying them of what is specific to New York State and the code regulations, and that that is just what you have been hired to do.
That's your job.
Most of them are understandable, and they tell me they're gonna either get the permits or they're gonna take the pools down. Some of them, well, it's like anything else.
Right.
The other thing I had is, at last month's meeting, you asked about that trailer. I did send a letter telling them, they had 21 days from the receipt of the letter. They signed for the letter July 14th, so it won't be till the first part of August before the time runs out. Then I'll send the order to comply. And at that, after that, if nothing happens, then it's up to the board to decide how they want to proceed with that. I believe you own the land now, it's just a matter... But they did call me prior to them getting the letter, and I returned the phone call and was told that they were sleeping, and they weren't gonna answer the phone, so that's where that ended up.
Thank you. Open the meeting to the public at this time. Anybody know which across the board? Open the meeting to the public at this time, and our motion to recess.
Got it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded and discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.